Call a meeting. Call a meeting order, please. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Mayor Proton Pokencor?
Here.
And Mayor Davies?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
If we could all stand for the pledge, please. Susan, will you offer the pledge, please?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I get everybody still remain standing still. We don't have an invocation today, but I would like to offer a moment of silence. We had a fatality a little bit ago on Highline and Curry. I don't know anything about it, but if we could just offer a moment of silence, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Prayers for whoever the family is, and so just keep, everybody keep that in your hearts and thoughts, please. Audience communications, the council cannot comment on items not listed on the special council meeting agenda. Comments directed to an item on the agenda should be made at the time of the item's called for discussion. Business, city clerk reports?
Thank you. As you know, Councilmember Stuckowitz resigned as of Monday's council meeting. So we'd like to get things rolling on moving forward with this. We have 60 days from the date of that resignation to either appoint somebody or call for a special election. Of course, we, with an appointment, it's going to cost you around $250 or so to publish that in the paper. This is, of course, just for District Two. Special election, that can cost anywhere from, you know, $10,000, $20,000. It just depends, we have to wait until the next election that the county would hold, and then we just have to pay our share of costs. So the amount of cost could vary. It would be our recommendation that we publish a notice of intention to fill a vacancy for a member of the city council for District Two by appointment. And that's our recommendation to you.
And the District Two map is on our website?
Yes, it is on our website.
And we'll be advertising it in the newspaper and online?
Yeah, so the thought is that we'd bring it back to you probably the second meeting in August for an appointment.
This doesn't require a motion, does it?
I think we should.
Motion to.
Better to do that.
Say then.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pokencor?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you. Development Services Director reports?
Before we start with that, Mayor?
Yes.
We did not do the roll call, so I just want to make sure that we, for the record, let's make sure we have a roll call.
We did the roll call.
Did we do that? No, that was the vote.
It was a roll call.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, I missed it too. He asked me, he's like, did we do the roll call? And I said, no. So I've said yes twice.
Am I saying correct? It's been a busy day.
Yeah, that's the worst thing that happened today.
There you go.
I love it when younger people than me have.
Very good. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I just want to start by thanking you guys. As you can tell from the nature of the agenda, we asked for the special meeting largely because of stuff that's operating in my realm. We had a strange, as I'll go through each of these reports, you'll kind of understand the timeline, reasons why it was so urgent to have a special meeting to do these. But I just wanted to express my appreciation for you guys taking the time to join us for this meeting. So the first report I have for you is the RSTP Valley Boulevard Road Resurfacing Project Phase Two Bid Award. And so this roadway, as you guys will recall, used to be Route 202 years ago. So this is Valley Boulevard between Curry and Beach Street is the section that we're interested in here. There's a map that indicates the section that's the target of this project. And so it's provided some interesting engineering challenges for us because of the nature of how the road is built now. But we targeted this, and ourselves being engineering and public works, now a number of years ago when we produced that 10-year paving plan is one of the projects that we need to target for rehabilitation. And so we followed that plan and sought Regional Surface Transportation Program funds to rehabilitate this road a couple of years ago when we did that application. We'll be repeating that process for another section here later in the agenda. But we went through the process of developing the plans for this one-third mile section of pavement and grinding. And we began advertisement on June 5th and opened bids yesterday for the project. The bid information is provided there. We unfortunately only received a single bid from Griffith Construction. And to clarify what we show there, we don't normally show the numbers this way. We bid the project with a base bid and a bid alternative, which means we do this commonly where we are not sure how much money, where the bid is going to land. And so we add some additional add-on components to the project as bid alternatives that we can take or not take depending upon how the bids turn out. And so we thought it was important to display it this way because we're going to recommend you don't award the bid alternative number one today because it's more money than we think is worth spending at this time. So the base bid was 600, 7,000, and the bid alternate number one was 93,000. So in compliance with the Public Contract Code, we undertook a review of this low bid from Griffith, who just finished Pinion Street, for instance. So they're a well-known contractor to us and they do good work. The bid they provided, we deem to be responsive in accordance with the Public Contract Code. So here's the choice before you. We really only have three. You could award the whole thing, the base bid plus the bid alternative, which would be just about, just over $700,000. You could award just the base bid for $600,000, or you could not award the bid at all. Those are really the only choices that we have. Staff reviewed the budget. This project, the engineer's estimate for the base bid plus the bid alternate was 570,000. So this project came in about $130,000 higher than we had anticipated. And so when we received the bid, we had to ask ourselves whether we have the funds and whether we ought to recommend to you to move forward or not. We've concluded that while the base bid is roughly $200,000 in total, total project value, over what we have available, we still feel like this is an important project. This road is in dire need of this asphalt, in our opinion. And so we went and spoke with financing with Greg, and we believe that the general fund has the funds available to supplement the needed additional budget. And so some of the calculations are shown there. We are, we were already on the hook for 11.47%. Better put to you, RSTP had planned to provide to us about 320, 330,000. So that will still come from RSTP. The remaining amount will have to come from SB One and General Fund. So those three will make up the cost associated with the project. So with that as background information, we still feel like, again, the project is important enough to find the extra money, basically, and to execute the project. And so I therefore recommend that you award the Valley Boulevard Roads Resurfacing Project base bid to Griffith Construction in the amount of 607,735 dollars and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 10% of the original contract for 60,773. Last note, the reason this was on a special agenda was we have, we are attempting to work with the contractor to get this repaid before school starts. I have to still have that kickoff meeting with the contractor and coordinate that, but that was our goal, and that's why it's urgent. So hopefully that gives you the full report, and that concludes my report.
Do we have any comments from the public? Do we have any comments from staff, from city council? Phil?
Could you go over, you said the bid came in a little higher than engineer's estimate, correct? By a couple hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
Forty percent higher?
Not quite that much. So again, the engineer's estimate for the full project was, and this is just the construction cost. So this is where the delta comes in. The construction cost came in 130,000 more than we planned.
Okay, so about thirty seven?
But whenever we do a project of this nature, at every phase, we internally evaluate the entire budget. So that's more than just construction. That's the engineering, that's the construction management, that's the geotechnical testing.
Okay.
That's all the pieces. So our engineer's estimate for construction was 570, came in at 700. So that's the 130,000 difference. But then we looked at the entire budget, and we needed to close a gap of $200,000 to deliver the entire project. And that's what I reported here.
So the delta was from 570 to the 607?
Correct. There was, the $200,000 delta is what we have to take out of General Fund to make the project whole.
And we can't use Measure S funds because this is considered a regional project? Is that correct?
No, yeah. So General Fund would be the last, which is, Measure S is a simple sales tax. There are no restrictions. It was, you know, the voters voted on infrastructure maintenance, water, sewer, streets and roads, and public safety. So that would be absolutely within the realm of Measure S. But General Fund will be the last funding source that we use. We do, Amanda and I are closing out the books for SB Ones of gas, streets and roads, gas tax. So we're going to pull from those first. General Fund will be the last revenue source we would pull from.
Sure. It makes sense either way.
Absolutely.
And then is this just a resurfacing or a grindout and redoing it, rehabilitation? And are all the curbs and gutters completed in that area?
No.
No. No, they're not. We are grinding out three inches and replacing it. About three inches, so. No, curb and gutter on the south side is in its final location. There is no curb and gutter in certain sections along the north side.
North side.
That's news for another day. We're working on that. But no, we will simply be resurfacing the existing asphalt. So the limits of the asphalt now will be repaired. Yeah, in that entire stretch. So there won't be, from Curry to Beach, there will not be any old asphalt. We will be repaving the whole with the, that whole stuff, yeah.
Yeah. I'm glad to see it being done. The road looks kind of like my Bear Coast plains with lines all over and unevenness.
You didn't have to go there.
But I'm waiting for those curbs and gutters on the north side one of these days.
And is the grinding going to be used in the new mix, or are they going to be set aside for alleys? I'm just asking. You laugh.
I am trying to recall on this front. No, we're just recovering. Can you remind me, Andrew?
Yes, sir, we're taking them in our public works here.
Yes, we're.
Super.
Recovering them, but don't have yet a plan for putting them somewhere else.
You will notice along Mountain View at this point, on both sides, east and west side of Mountain View, our public works department is bringing hard-brained grinds out of stock and filling it in and making that road smoother, nicer, and safer.
That really works. Okay. All right. A motion to approve on staff's recommendation.
Well, I got more. I'm sorry, do you have any comments?
I already made five.
No.
I have one. Now, is this including the intersection of Curry and Tucker? I mean Curry and Valley, or is it just starting at this side of Curry?
Yeah. That is what the bid alternate was for.
Okay.
Was to repay the intersection. We went out and looked at the quality of the asphalt in that location and determined that we did not think it was worth the 93,000 at this time to do that. We do, just to, in case, well, I live it every day, so I remember it. You guys probably don't. We are expecting in a future cycle of RSTP within this 10-year plan to try to redo Curry from C Street to Valley. And so we will look again at that time as to whether or not perhaps we'll get the intersection at that point. So another project in a different, immediately adjacent location, we'll try to get that intersection in a few days.
Okay. All right, thank you. I have no other questions. Roll call vote, please.
Need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I had the motion.
It's okay.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pokencor?
Definitely, yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Item three, Jay?
Yes, sir. Okay, the second item, I think it's the next two for you, are new grant applications that we're preparing. And so this is the same grant funding source for the project we just approved, Regional Surface Transportation Improvement Program. Every two years, the city of Tatchby, along with all the other cities and municipalities in Kern County, receive an allotment of RSTP funds, and we have to apply to have that money and to designate where we intend to spend that money. And most importantly, we have to have a resolution of commitment from you all that you see the project, know the project, and will provide the additional matching funds necessary to deliver the project. So in this case, staff has identified, again, part of that 10-year plan was the next segment of Valley. From Beach to Tucker would be the next RSTP cycle. So this would be for construction in two years. And so this is, the application is included in your packet along with the area in question. We estimate that total project work to be about 541,000. That is, of course, today's estimate only. And so we would receive funds from RSTP of about 315,000, and we would have to deliver the remaining 226,000 for the project. And so again, we are required to have a resolution from you all stating that you support the project and the necessary funds to deliver the project. And so I recommend that you adopt resolution authorizing the filing of an application for Regional Surface Transportation Program funding and committing the necessary local match and stating the assurance to complete the project. That concludes my report.
Do we have comments from the public? I see none. Counsel? Phil?
In the future of Griffin Hollow that dipped in the road, do we have any plans for proving the shoulder of the north side?
Not as of yet.
And we all go by there and say, who's going to slide off that this winter?
Yeah. Don't jinx us. But no, that's County Pocken. So that's where this is tricky. The road is owned by the city, but the land adjacent on either side there by Griffith is county land. And so no, we don't have a plan for widening the road at this point. It's more like that would have to follow after the annexation of that land into the city, which is a challenging issue, as you guys will know.
Or have the county.
Or have the county do it. I suspect it would be tough to talk the county into finding a priority in their long list of projects. That's just my opinion, but I would be certainly willing to talk to my counterparts of the county about it.
We could certainly ask. If there's something in the future, since we're doing some work there and we've got the utility work going through there too, correct?
That's right.
Undergrounding?
Yes.
So there are big digging.
Yeah.
They might want to fill it up just a little bit wider.
Make it safer, sure. All right, I'll have that conversation with them.
Some of those funds might cross over into something that would be useful for all of us.
Yeah, or maybe we look at a joint CMAC run. Let me think about it too. Let me see if I can, you guys know me, I'm always hunting for something. So let me see if I can put that on the list and see what I can find.
That's appreciated. So if there's any funding on the table from other folks in the county that don't use theirs, we're prepared to get any additional funding and meet the match.
Always.
Do we have to put that in the grant application?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead. Okay. There's a little bit of a price difference. Is it because it's one-tenth of a mile shorter or longer, you know, from Curry, from Beach to Tucker in that area?
Yeah, the cost estimate, we can, this is, you're getting deep into the, the original engineer's estimate for the first segment was 570,000. Still feel like that was a pretty good estimate. We only got one bidder. And I know I've talked to you guys in the past about the nature of bidding climate. It's hard to predict. What we found, we spoke to a couple of other contractors that typically work with us, and their answers were simple. We don't have enough time. That's why we didn't bid your job. I can't control that, that's not even negative against the city, that's a comment about the climate. So we didn't feel like it was appropriate to commit a larger amount of money to this application at this time because we didn't have a, we didn't think there was genuine reason to believe the cost is really that much higher. So the 540 aligns pretty well with the 570, which was our estimate prior. And we're hopeful that in two years, the bidding climate will be a little better, and we won't face a situation where we only got a single bid.
Okay, so this project is scheduled to start when?
This would be for construction in two years.
Two years, okay. I was going to say they have to do it before October, but it's going to be a while.
Yes. This is just the application to get the money assigned to us.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I would say thank you for always being prepared, having projects on the books, ready to go because we have been in a position, other cities have not quite been ready and had to turn down the money that was, that they wanted. And we've been ready, been able to get that additional funding. So having projects ready to go is of file importance. So thank you very much. And I'll make the motion to approve it.
I just, real quick, Jay? I know this project here is, can you give us an update on the telephone, the pole realignment on the north side? Would that affect any of the work that we're doing now when they do that?
The latest timeline information we have received from Edison is that we have a good chance of being done with that project before we would get to construction of this project. And so hopefully there would be no conflict between those two. They'd be long, done, and gone, and then we would be moving in a year later to repave it. So that's my hope.
Okay, thank you.
Is the Edison all the way from Curry, or is it from like Beach or Griffin to Tucker? The Edison?
No, Edison is from Los Colinas to Curry, sir. Yeah.
Oh, it's a stretch, yeah.
Yes, the whole stretch. That's how we got the county to partner with us, is because of that county.
Exactly, yeah. Just give it a partner, that one of the little detail we.
They took care of it. They were, it was a good partnership.
That was a good way.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Jay. Phil, you had a vote.
I have made the motion, yes.
I'll second it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pokencor?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
It was a four zero vote to adopt the resolution as presented.
So we're on item four?
There we go.
Congestion, that's due as well?
Yes, sir, I got it all.
All right.
All right. Similar to the last item, this is yet another grant application, and I'm asking you all for permission to file for the grant and to adopt a resolution stating your support for the project. So this is a similar funding source to RSTP called congestion mitigation air quality. As a reminder, that's the funding that just paid for the Pinion Extension Project. So same funding source. And we apply about every other cycle for CMAC funding. I don't usually apply every single cycle because we're a smaller agency and we probably won't win every cycle. But Pinion was two cycles ago, and then we took off last, and so this is the next one. And we'd like to propose that the city look to the intersection, a partnered project with us in the county, looking to the intersection of Highline and Tucker to construct a roundabout in that location as part of a long-range commuting plan. And so we know this is kind of a new idea. The county of Kern is working on a roundabout out at Bear Valley and Cummings Valley Road. I don't know if you guys know that. That's in the works, that has been funded, is moving forward. And so I've been working with the county extensively for the last year or so on our traffic program. And I think that's a good thing because our roads talk to each other and meet each other and like to be on the same page with them. And so a while ago, both ourselves and the county agreed that Highline Road is, most important is an east-west commuter route. And that's the county's side of this equation. That doesn't include the city's side of it. And, but with the growing expectation for traffic, we've been keeping our eye on what are the best ways to handle these intersections. And I mean, I certainly didn't hope for what occurred today, but just a mile down the road at Curry and Highline sort of illustrates the reality that as time goes on, improvements to Highline and these intersections are in order. So I began working with the county, trying to identify the best solution to the problem. It's a four-way stop now. Congestion mitigation air quality money is commonly used here across the county to upgrade all ways stop intersections to a higher level of traffic control. The only two real choices there are a traffic signal or a roundabout. And in this case, the benefit of a roundabout is twofold. It's all here in your report, I provided it to you, was they tend to reduce the severity of accidents because everybody slows down and is, and moves off of their straight-line shot. And the second, and so it doesn't create these very direct accident impacts. They are also more efficient than traffic signals. You move through there faster than with a traffic signal. Because now no one stops. Whereas with a traffic signal, you, you know, half the traffic's going to stop and half the traffic's not. In this case, everybody moves through there. They tend to be more expensive and they take up more space. So those are the kinds of the pros and cons. But working together with the county, both agencies feel like this is a good project. So I approached the county and I said, how about we apply for CMAC money and you partner with us? Partner being you help us pay for it. And the county said, yes, we think that's a good idea and we like this project. So that's what I'm asking for today, is the project, I've given you the project description. I've talked to the county, it's about a $3.8 million project is the expectation. We are required to match 11%. I've spoken to the county about splitting that match component based upon the distribution of traffic in that intersection. About 35% of the traffic is city traffic, about 65% is county traffic. They're agreeable to that, so I've included that split there. And we would be able to take these funds out of our traffic impact fee program. So no general fund money to cover that. That's what the fee program exists for. And so with that, that is the application we'd like to provide to Kern Cog and ask for these funds for this project. And I therefore recommend that you adopt a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for congestion mitigation and air quality program funding and committing the necessary local match and stating the assurance to complete the project. That's my report.
Thank you, Jay. Do we have any comments from the public? See none, council?
I'm just not a roundabout fan, I'm sorry, but I've traveled in England and driven them, it's, yeah.
They drive, they drive on the wrong side of the road anyways.
I know, and I did that too, I was proud of myself, there you go.
Enter the roundabout at the right place.
Yeah. Anyway.
When my daughter lived in Vegas, there's a lot of roundabouts up in Summerlin. And they're pretty slick. I mean, that's the first time I've ever, and now I think they have one out there in Palmdale, 160th and Avenue S or something like that.
My engineering advice to you all is that they have their place. They are not the solution to every intersection problem. But when you have the intersection of slow-moving traffic with fast-moving traffic, the safety benefits are real. So that's my argument for that location.
And Phil? Susan?
Oh, I went to Meadows Field yesterday and went around about to get there, so it didn't kill me or anything.
All right.
Should we be looking at, I'm sorry, anyone else? Making Curry and Highline a four-way stop, talking to the county? Because there is a line of sight issue to the right. It's been there for years, but traffic is, I've seen a lot more Caltrans Highway Patrol exposure there in recent months, all along that stretch, all the way to Tachulla Springs. And there have been other accidents, just not.
Well, and here, we're ahead of the game in two ways. One is the city adopted our LRSP, which is the Local Road Safety Plan. And during that, I'm looking at Andrew, he did a lot of grunt work on that. It's a, so the county, Kern Cog hired, you may recall this, Phil, hired a consultant to do a lot of cities here to generate that specific Caltrans-related plan. We, and so it identifies, I believe, Curry and Highline and Dennison. And Highline is both roads needing a long-term improvement. And then in addition to that, I mentioned working with the county on our traffic program. That program also has already identified these intersections. So the answer to your question is yes, we should be looking at improvements in those locations, but give me, you know, today's news, they always impact the engineering department, you know, not in a good way, but they do cause us to make sure we're looking at these kinds of things. So let me have a little time with what happened today, a couple of months, and let me look through our plans, and we'll begin to consider what is the appropriate response to that situation. So yeah, here.
That's where I was going with it, down the road, I knew it was immediately. But I'm real happy with this roundabout, if anybody wants to make a.
Well, they should all be at the major streets, Curry, Tucker, and Dennison, I think, because people speed down Highline like you would not believe, but, yeah.
I know, I told, it's been working very, very heavily because I saw two tickets the other day, one for 108 and one for 97 on Highline.
He's lucky he didn't get his car towed.
Yeah.
That's big.
Yeah.
So.
Breathless driving.
Kind of crazy. All right, if there, we have no other comments from council? Roll call vote?
Need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pokencor?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
It was a four zero vote to adopt the resolution as presented.
Good news, that's great.
Yes, thank you. Maybe before we do the next one, I failed to mention my reports. Maybe before we do the next one, I failed to mention my reports, both these applications are due on July 17th, which is why I needed these resolutions today. Because they're due before we meet again, so I hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, item five, Valley Park Project?
Sure. Okay, so we are out bid on this project. We've spoken about it a number of times. I think we even have a little exhibit showing what the park looks like. This is for a specific item associated with the park. We have planned to owner furnish several of the facilities inside the park. Just as a brief update, owner furnish means we purchase them. We would have a reason to do that and I'll explain the reason why. And we furnish them to the contractor who installs them. So that's what it means to owner furnish something. So the park includes some play equipment there as long with the five-aside soccer park there in the middle, that rectangle, and then along the bottom screen there, you see the parking lot and the improvements to Linden Court. Those are the major features. There are also an exit of the play equipment there, a couple of covered patio areas so that people can use for a party or a barbecue. So today I'm asking you for permission to owner, to purchase the bike racks, trash cans, park benches, baller, lit ballards and decorative streetlights and the five-aside soccer field for this project. So let me break those into two pieces. The city has a purchasing policy for purchasing vendor-supplied materials. That's a separate policy that I wasn't going to go into here this afternoon unless you all wanted to, but there are procedures for purchasing based upon the value of the item to be purchased. So that first group of items, not including the five-aside soccer field, all fall under the $30,000 threshold for purchasing. And so we recommend that you allow us to purchase them. And the reason we would do it instead of contractors, we want the exact product we want. Because we have the same park bench everywhere in town, the same trash can everywhere in town, the same streetlights everywhere in town. So by reusing the exact same brand and equipment, we stock replacement parts and it's a lot easier to maintain. So we standardize those. So that's one half of my request. The second half and the more complicated piece is the purchase of the five-aside soccer field. So we went through a process based on our purchasing policy, which says that once you crest 75,000, I think is the number, you're required to obtain multiple proposals for that work. This is very specialized, obviously, but we did obtain three quotes for the work. They're listed there in the report. The first quote, the one that's significantly less expensive than the other two, was not responsive because it didn't include half the things we needed for the five-side park. The other two are the ones in question. We recommend purchasing from Urban Soccer Park. And there in front of you, you guys received a copy of the proposal. And so today I'm asking for permission to make this purchase, subject to the contract being edited to the satisfaction of the city attorney. So we are working on that language right now, but we really didn't want to wait until July 17th, which is the next council meeting, because these are hard to get your hands on and they take many months to get. And we don't want to hold the project up over them, so we want to get busy buying it. And we have the money. So that's the background on what's going on. We could talk about the details if you're interested, but otherwise, we recommend, and again, this, the whole Valley Park is 100% funded by Clean California and including these purchases are funded by that grant. And so we recommend that first you approve the owner furnished purchase of the bike racks, trash cans, park benches, ballers and decorative streetlights. And then also you approve the purchase contract for the five-aside soccer field for the total amount of $201,555 from Urban Soccer Park, subject to city attorney approval. So that concludes my report.
What is a five, a five-aside soccer field? What is?
It's a small, compact soccer field with walls and fencing. So you can play the ball off the walls.
Oh, okay.
And it's five people aside.
Okay.
So it's not a full soccer team. That's the acronym. It's five aside, so it's a little compacted. And so it's a fun pickup game is the concept is.
Yeah.
Hang out there with your friends, throw the ball in the middle and run around till you're tired, you know? So our experience, we even went and toured, or Andrew did, looked at a couple of these facilities, highly used. They're perfect for a park setting, you know, because it's not going to be an AYSO game or something like that, but it's perfect for getting the community out to get some exercise. And we found that they were pretty successful. So this one's lit. It will have a lighting system so you can play later at night. So we think it's going to be well-used. We hope.
All right, do we have any comments for the public? Counsel, Phil?
Oh, I have a couple, actually. I go by there waiting for it to start, you know, everything, I go, oh, when are they going to start that? My main concern is the fencing. I can, because of my profession in the past, I'm worried that the ball will go over the fence. Some young child will run out on Valley and try to get the ball and that's really concerning me a lot.
We have the exact same concern. And so we have a second fence that is, it's hard to see. The line is right under, do you see, right at the top of the page is an arched walkway that connects to the sidewalk on Valley. There is a fence immediately south of that that runs all the way across the front of the park. So this is a low four-foot, four-foot rodarm fence?
Yeah.
Decorative fence. So if it goes, let me just, you want to align? It's just easier if I stand up there.
Proposal, Jay, yeah.
Is it? There's a fence in?
Yeah, so there is netting surrounding the soccer park.
So the soccer park is here, it's fenced.
11 feet.
If they get it all the way over here, there's another fence right here. And that's, that's 150 feet away. So in my opinion, very unlikely. With that, we purposely added this fence. There's no fence, obviously, where the openings are, but that way if a kid's kicking a soccer ball around here, we're, we're hoping to really minimize the possibility of dribbling onto Valley.
I think it's 11 or 12 feet tall, the netting. It's got a comfy wall and then 11 or 12 feet of netting. And that's also why we put the soccer park closer to the parking lot to the south versus flip-flopping it with the playground equipment itself. So we didn't take that all into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Are we going to have any additional fencing, I mean, to keep vehicles from entering there accidentally off 202?
Oh, yes. No, we're removing the drive approach there and we're doing a whole entry wall. We'll have the name of the park on it and that fence. And there's actually a two or three-foot slope.
Okay.
Up from that sidewalk. So it will be, I can never guarantee that somebody will. But it will be very abnormal. Yeah, it will be obvious you should not do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Susan?
The only thing I was thinking of is everybody coming to the park and they're going to have to go across Valley. And we've been, all before, we've been talking about streetlights and safety and I'm not advocating a light, I'm just saying, how are we going to ensure that?
Yeah.
Especially.
So we have a traffic signal there with a controlled crosswalk that's right in that area. And then the park itself has lighting. Part of this purchase is those ballards and those decorative streetlights are spread around the park to illuminate the entire park. And then the reason we built the parking lot at the bottom is you'll be able to come in off of Linden, what's that? Aspen and then to Linden and park here. So we built it this way so that if you want to play five-aside, you can even drive here and park and play. And so it's got a bit of a regional feel to it, even though it's a smaller park to be a regional park. But, but yeah, I feel like we've got a pretty safe crossing across Valley. If you want it, you can use the bed button and cross. And then the park itself is well-lit, so we're expecting it to stay, that to add to the safety.
And then ballards are those little holes with a light in them?
Yeah, well, yep. They're pedestrian scale lighting. That's the term we use, so that way it's better for the neighbors. You know, we don't need it to be the surface of the sun, but we want it to be well-lit.
Yeah.
Is that a question? Yes, go ahead. So on the, where there's the arch at the north end of it, you see there's a hash pattern. Is that lawn area?
Yeah, so, yeah, where you see the hash pattern is going to receive landscaping. That's correct.
Okay. And I think that's where Johnny was going and everyone else with the, what if kids are just playing with a ball on the grass right there? That could still be a 12-foot high.
It's not grass.
Sorry?
It's not grass, it's landscaped area.
Oh, it's not a place to go and play.
Out in front, we have a mixture of flowerbed and turf. So on the edges, it's all flowerbed. It will not be convenient for, and then right up against Valley, it's sloped like two or three feet. And so I don't expect kids to be hanging out in there. I really don't. Inside the park, in amongst the play equipment, and there is grass there. Also, we designed it so that you, the kids should come in there and throw the frisbee around and not, you know, hang out there right along the northern edge of the property. That's just going to be a very attractive entrance with a sign and easy pedestrian access or bike access, because the bike path is right along there. You can bike into the park, park your bike and hang out for a couple hours.
And then the 12-foot netting, is that just south of the arch?
The 12-foot netting is just around the soccer park. There is a four-foot fence up at the front.
Okay, I think this is going to be.
I think you guys are going to love it.
This is going to be a really nice neighborhood park for the area. They don't have one.
Yeah.
You know, we've got one on the north side.
And we've had it, to your point earlier, we've had this plan in some form of this. We've obviously changed the details as we've matured them, but for about 10, 12 years, we purchased this property with RDA money years ago. And we have this plan floating in the background. So when Clean California money came around, which was out of the blue a year ago, they said, if you've got a project, you can execute in two years, you can have it. And we said, we'll do it. Perfect. So here we are.
Great. So, do you have anything else?
No, I think that's good.
Make a recommendation.
Okay. Do you want them both at the same time or do you want different?
Yes, they'd be fine together.
Okay. I move that we approve the owner furnished purchase of bike racks, trash cans, park benches, ballards and decorative streetlights for the Valley Park project. I also moved that we approve the purchase contract for the five-aside soccer field for the total amount of $201,555 from Urban Soccer Park, subject to city attorney approval.
Second.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Volkankord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
It's going to be a great addition to that area. We just need to get that old bell market leaned out.
And is the maintenance city or is that going to be?
Maintenance and city.
City, okay.
Sure.
You know, I brought that up earlier, but that's going to look beautiful. We just got to get rid of that other part, I saw it, get that cleaned up. All right, we'll move on to item six, Tatchby Municipal Airport.
Yes.
Jay?
There. Councilmembers, the final item I have for you is the Tatchby Municipal Airport Taxiway Relocation and Rehabilitation Construction Project, Phase Two, award the bid. So I think you guys have known about this. We've been talking about it a while. The city of Tatchby is anticipating our final award of funding from the FAA and Caltrans for this project. In February of 2023, we began advertising for this project. And so this one's a little different than the ones we do. The FAA requires us to advertise a project, get all the way to bids and then apply for the money. And then they send you the money. So they're a little, I don't love the procedure, but it is what, I love the money. So we'll spend the money. But that's the procedure. And so we've had these bids in hand since February and it is time for us to award or the bids will go invalid. Because the bids are only have a life to them. At a certain number of months, they're no longer valid. And we received the two bids that are included there in the staff report. We received those bids on March 8th. We did, John Smith, our airport engineer, reviewed them for responsiveness and did deem the Miller Equipment Company bid to be responsive. And so fiscally, the total project cost, and this includes again, engineering design, construction, construction administration, grant application administration, there are a lot of pieces to a project of this size. Pardon me, the total project budget is, is just about 6.8 million. It's there listed in the report. The construction contract for Miller would be 5.8 million. So the difference between those are the soft costs or all the different things that it takes to deliver the project. This project is funded at 94.5% through the FAA and the, and Caltrans funding, which means the city has to deliver the remaining 5.5% in match in order to do the project. So we're going to ask you guys to award the project expecting that the city's total match construct, or expectation would be $372,631. That was included in the budget, by the way, that you all approved just earlier this week. So that's there. And so coupled with the city match and the FAA grant, we anticipate the 6.8 million to be sufficient to complete the entire project. And so again, this afternoon, the step that you're taking is to award the bid of the taxiway, and this will be my recommendation, award the bid of the taxiway relocation rehabilitation construction project phase two in the amount of 500, or 5,847,365 to Miller Equipment Company and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change order, orders up to a maximum of 10% of the construction cost or 584,737. And just as a point of clarification, that is simply a budget threshold for how much additional money we can spend on change orders without having to come back here and ask you for permission. And in note, we typically don't, if we're doing well, we don't get close to 7% and 10% in change order money, but, but we ask for that threshold because we frankly don't want to burden the council with multiple meetings over sometimes very small change order items. So hope that clarifies what we're looking for and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jay. Do we have any public comment on this item? Counsel?
Can I give you a quick, I just want to give you a quick background on this real quick, just so you all kind of know where we've been with this whole project. It was 2009 when this was originally put on our ACIP, which was our Airport Capital Improvement Project Plan. And we, it's just been kind of pushed, you know, the FAA thought it was a great project, but would never fund it, never fund it. Finally in 2014, they funded an environmental assessment for it. Took them four years to get that back to us. And that was us pushing them and pushing them. Started to design in 2018 and then construction was getting pushed and pushed. And as you know, those costs, as Jay talks about it all the time, just for increases. It started as a total construction project without what we did last year, which was another, I think, 700,000, at about 2.5 million for the total project. So going back that far. Anyhow, it was last year Greg and I attended the ACA conference, which is the Association of California Airports Conference. And the FAA was there and they were going on about how they love projects that are shovel-ready. And we'd been ready and been ready and so on. It was at that point we approached Mark McCarty, who is the regional director for our area, which is for all of the Pacific area and everything. And, you know, put him on notice there saying, hey, we've been ready and you guys have not delivered on what you've been saying. So what you're saying is not quite true. Well, anyways, he followed through. And so that's, I believe, the reason we're actually getting that grant, this grant finally. If it hadn't been for going to that conference, having that one-on-one with that director and everything, we would not be where we are right now.
They came here.
Yes, they came to Tatchby.
Came for this western region that's unheard of for a small town, you know?
Yeah. So anyways, I just wanted to make sure you were all aware of what it took to get where we are.
And thank you and Greg for making them aware of what happened.
Well, it was, add a little more to it. This gentleman is a very important individual in the FAA, western region, Oregon, Washington, California, Nevada, Arizona, Guam, Hawaii, and so forth.